Yeah, go ahead and let me know. I know the mayor doesn't use that, but I decided I would. All right. I'd like to welcome to our city council meeting on January January. As now I forgot what day it was, January third, two thousand twenty-three. For those watching the mayor's excuse tonight, I'm Mayor Pro Tem. And I will be conducting the meeting. Uh, we will be having a citizen comment period in a few minutes. If you wish to make a comment, just fill out one of the forms on the side and hand it to one of the staff. They will get it up to me. And if you are online and you would like to speak, go ahead and just raise your hand and we will make sure you have the opportunity to speak. First item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. We've asked our city manager, Tim Tingey, to lead us in there.
Please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
As usual, we have a time set aside that anyone can come and speak to the council. We usually allot three minutes per speaker. Encourage you to keep it to say what you need to, but to not to refrain from any personal attacks or other things like that during the meeting. If you have questions that need to be answered, we will, we've got, we've got your name and contact information and staff will usually get back with you. Over the next couple of days. The first card that I have is for Kimo Esplun. Hope I just, oh, just, just, just.
My name is Kimo Esplun. My family lives on twenty-three oh five Larita Way in Cottonwood Heights. We love this community and we're grateful for your service. We love living on Little Cottonwood Creek. And so I'm here. Four point one is a public comments relative to sensitive lands evaluation and development standards.
And do you, are your comments explicitly for that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then I probably should have said that we'll take those when we actually go to the public comments.
Thank you.
Excuse me. That's okay. No, that, that, that's my mistake, but I'll just say I don't normally do this, so. Well, and if I call your name and your comments are also for one of the other public comment period, just let me know. Leslie Korach. I know I probably butchered your name.
Hi, my name's Leslie Kovach.
Oh, okay.
There you go. And I live on Wasatch Boulevard, and I want to talk about a couple of accidents that occurred in December, four days from each other. The first one occurred on December eighteenth. The accident occurred at night. Police and fire were dispatched to the accident scene. It appears that the car was traveling at very high speed down Wasatch Boulevard. It traveled through about eighteen to twenty inches of snow, dropped past a cement barrier, hit a cell tower box, continued, hit a fire hydrant, and finally came to rest across the street on Prospector Boulevard, leaving car parts in my neighbors gutters. The second one was on December twenty-second at the intersection of Wasatch Boulevard and Fort Union. While I don't know all the details of this accident as I came upon it, as they were cleaning it up, the one picture I have is of a car sitting on a Jersey barrier. I can only tell you that my conclusion is there was speed involved in this accident as well. This is concerning because this is the only crosswalk across Wasatch Boulevard and Fort Union and the Big Cottonwood Trail, which we've talked about, is intersecting that point. Had this car been speeding, which it obviously was, and there had been pedestrians or bikers there, they would have been hit or killed. I truly appreciate the Cottonwood Heights Police Department responding to these accidents and working very hard in the cold conditions. I would ask, like to ask the police and the city to unanimously join with the citizens groups here in Cottonwood Heights for a redesign of Cotton or Wasatch Boulevard and make it safer for the public who live and travel along Wasatch Boulevard. A redesign has the potential of reducing accidents by lowering speeds and encouraging drivers to pay attention as they are driving on the road, thereby reducing the speed. Reducing the speed also reduce the need of our police department to respond to these high-speed accidents. Cottonwood Heights Police Department motto is solve the problem. I asked the police to help the citizens who live and travel on Wasatch, solve the problem by encouraging a redesign of Wasatch, including speed reduction methods such as cades, barriers, and landscaping, which would protect the people who live along Wasatch and could slow the high-speed traffic icy every day. In addition, a redesign could also stop cars from performing U-turns in the middle of Wasatch Boulevard, just to get into the right-hand lane of Big Cottonwood so they can skip the rest of the traffic lane. And just a recent addition, drivers are making U-turns once they're in that right-hand lane on Wasatch Boulevard. My final comments here. We all know Cottonwood Heights is a wonderful place to live. However, Wasatch is taking a toll on our homes. Myself and many of my neighbors have had to upgrade our windows and doors to protect sound barriers so we can live in our homes. Our lives are threatened by the continual onslaught of speeding cars and sound of traffic, which includes brake brakes and cars with no mufflers, loud motorcycles racing on Wasatch. Until we get the Wasatch redesign, we ask that enforcement of speed, U-turns, and noise controls be increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next card I have is for Philip Baum.
My name is Phil Baum, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood Heights residing in Council District Two. I'm requesting the full five minutes and additional thirty seconds to read a prepared statement on behalf of the residents of Corey Hill Circle. I want to start by thanking you all for your commitment to bettering the lives of your constituents and the commuting communities for which you serve. It is not an easy task to manage so many priorities and risk on a daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly basis for a city of over thirty-three thousand people. But I'm here today to ask you such a thing, to ask you to prioritize and manage risk. As a nine-year resident of the state of Utah, with the last five months residing in Cottonwood Heights, I couldn't be more impressed with the management of local and state resources, minus the gondola and UTA, of course. With that said, I am surprised by the risks taken by the city over the last twenty-plus years as it relates to the intersection of Bridgewater and Corey Hill Circle, which I provided the location on the front page of those handouts. The design of the waterway on Bridgewater and the slope of Corey Hill Circle create a dangerous intersection and many risks to not only the residents of Bridgewater and Corey Hill Circle, but to the city as well. Several of you are aware of the problematic design of this intersection and subsequent risks, but for the others, I will explain. This intersection is subject to regularly incapacitated vehicles due to the steep slope of Corey Hill Circle. Please see attachment one for reference. Vehicles becoming lodged here have included delivery trucks, service vehicles, as well as moving trucks. Aside from inconvenience, this creates a significant hazard for vehicles traveling on both Bridgewater and Corey Hill Circle. While a vehicle is stuck, other vehicles are unable to travel along Bridgewater, and they are also unable to reach residences on Corey Hill Circle. This would include emergency vehicles. A scenario at the forefront of my mind presently relates to my wife being four months pregnant. If anything were to happen and we were unable to exit our street or an emergency vehicle unable to reach us, it could be tragic for our family. Emergencies can happen at a residence at any time, and access in from and out to the main road is vital. These are potential tragedies I want to see avoided. Vehicles becoming incapacitated at this intersection occurs year-round, including in sunny and dry weather. As you can imagine, problems are only further exacerbated once winter sets in. Snow plows are unable to remove snow from the concave shape of the waterway in the convex slope of Corey Hill Circle. Please reference attachment two. This means that residents of Corey Hill Circle frequently have difficulty safely reaching their homes during the winter, even after both Bridgewater and Corey Hill Circle have been plowed. I have spoken to several employees of the city who have told me how much the plow drivers hate plowing our road due to this slope, and it shows in the poor pile service we receive after every storm. Not only can coming home from work be daunting, but leaving Corey Hill Circle can also be highly unsafe when the road remains snow-packed and icy. Vehicles can often slide down the slope as they enter onto Bridgewater in the mornings. It is nerve-wracking and unsettling to think of another vehicle approaching or possibly a child walking out onto the street at the time you don't have full control of your vehicle. Again, this is a tragedy I want to avoid. Lastly, the residents of Corey Hill Circle are unable to be serviced by Wasatch Waste and Recycling as their trucks cannot turn onto Corey Hill Circle without becoming stuck. The residents must, must take their bins down the steep slope and through the waterway to Bridgewater. This isn't just an inconvenience, it is dangerous, especially with rain and snow on the slopes and waterway. Please see attachment three. A simple mess-up with a week's worth of trash could result in yet another avoidable accident. While we are relatively new to the neighborhood, we've learned from our neighbors who are long-established residents of Cottonwood Heights that there has not been money in the budget over the last twenty years to remedy this intersection. While the intersection and waterway one block away, Bridgewater and Stone Road has been improved, Corey Hill Circle has been ignored for over twenty years, even with the persistent dialogue between the residents and the city. I S I U prioritize this repair during the twenty-three, twenty-four budget planning process that is currently underway to eliminate all of these risks I have just mentioned. With the generous offer from Judd McIntosh to utilize his heavy equipment, there should be no reason money is the issue this year. If for some reason this repair exceeds the allotted roadway and waterway improvement budget, I do offer other more cost-effective solutions. Studded winter tires for all vehicles registered to Corey Hill Circle residents provided by the city every three years. City employees to hand shovel the waterway and slope on Corey Hill Circle. City employees to set out and retrieve all waste and recycling bins of residents of Corey Hill Circle. Posted sign at the intersection, including contact information for tow truck service that will remove the stuck vehicle within fifteen minutes and be paid for by the city. Now, these suggestions may seem absurd to you and others, but is what the residents of Corey Hill Circle deal with every single day. The obvious solution is to just repair the road and eliminate these risks to the residents in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. We have, we have talked that, that I that is going to be part of our budget discussions this year. The next item we have is Nancy Arney.
Hi, City Council, and Happy New Year. I just wanted to revisit something that I had commented on a couple of times in the past. First on March first, two thousand twenty-two, and then again on August sixteenth about the adopted and special plans on the city's website. And I'm, I was just interested to know, because there's some really good plans that have been adopted and plans at special studies. And a couple of things I was suggesting that if the city could create and include a short summary on each of those plans that highlights the information and goals. And also, when adopting the plans, to include an estimated start or completion date. And also if the city could show updates or progress on the various plans. And lastly, for the city to take into consideration those plans and studies, the charrette, et cetera, as public engagement when updating the general plan. And I know there's talk about bicycle routes, and there's some really good ideas in some of those plans, and there was a a plan adopted on bicycle and trails master plan. And in one of the studies on the BYU Fort Union Corridor Study, it says the city can create bike-friendly corridors, corridors along major transportation routes such as Fort Union, and it gives some ideas about that. And so I just was wondering if there could be an update on some of those things so that's easy to find. Thank you.
Oh, I agree that our, our plans and other items need to be on the website and searchable. So we can, we can certainly work towards that. Are there any other comments I see? One hand up online, but I cannot read the name. Don Adams, if you can bring them into the meeting.
Hey, there, this is John. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. John Adams, I live in Cottonwood Heights in District Four. I wanted to just make a comment today or suggestion regarding the sustainability plan that was discussed in the working session earlier today. A suggestion, actually. First, congratulations on the commitment and progress the city's made on the plan. It's really great to see that. In addition, what was covered today, what I was asking is that our city take the current sustainability plan a step further to increase the scope of the citizen outreach component that was brought up. Specifically, I think our city could take the lead to enhance the outreach to include education at a systemic level. And what I mean by that is information, the outreach around the systems in place that drive the need for the various sustainability actions in the first place. I don't mean avocation for or against actions, but rather adding enough depth to help entice participation and action at the citizen level, you know, as the city takes their action. Samantha actually stated outreach can be the most transformative action the city can take, and I definitely agree. So I'll just throw on two suggestions that I thought of after the meeting that pertain to this idea. The first is there was comments around single-use plastic. The plan mentioned today that the city would address things because of the fact there is so much single-use plastic, eliminate the use of plastic and single-use plastic in the city buildings, sponsor cleanup projects to pick up the garbage that's, that's produced and coordinate with ensuring that it's recycled properly. But a systemic education initiative on this idea would include education, our citizens, as to why there is a problem in the first place. Where did it come from? Who promotes it? Why is the problem still growing? Who benefit from, from, from it? And this addresses the systemic drivers of the issue, and, and what it does is help broaden our perspective and our biases. For instance, on, on this issue, as we make our decisions around it. A second suggestion on systemic education would help educate why many of the items on the city's sustainability plan actually help to address climate change in general. There's really no mention of climate change in the action items in the plan I heard today, but the public's understanding that climate change is hap, is happening has increased, and education can help connect the dots between that issue and the suggested action items being taken by the city, you know, what we citizens can also do in this area. For example, we certainly want to promote recycling. Many people can, but many people do confuse the primary benefit of recycling, which is less pollution and less waste, with the potential to meaningfully address the very different problems of climate change. And this has become, a lot of people are confused and tend to mix up environmental problems like pollution, the hole in the ozone layer, or the greenhouse effect. Additionally, why many citizens might want to take personal action to address climate change, the number of options can feel overwhelming, and people may end up adopting habits that seem significant, but actually have a very small effect on climate change. With all the confusion, people tend to overestimate the effects of actions that are easy to take and underestimate actions that are harder to take. That's really, you get the idea. What I'm asking for is some additional outreach on cause and effect insight to help our busy citizens increase knowledge, eliminate confusion, and really to help better decision-making. That's it. I appreciate the consideration. Thanks to you guys, and happy new year.
All right, I have no more cards. I'm not seeing anyone else online. If that's the case, then we will close the public comments.
Hold on one second. Did I? I just want, I have one head item, the, we received a, a written comment from Jennifer Cottum.
That's right.
And I just want to make sure this was forwarded to the council, and I want to include it as part of the record. The council's all received this, and it relates to comments related to walkability and bikeability in the winter. And so I'm including that in the record.
Right, and I, I did read that earlier today, so, all right, thank you for keeping things straight. With that, we will close the Um, with that, we will, um, uh, close the, uh, citizen comments and open public comments. Um. Uh. Four point one is public comments on our, uh, sensitive lands evaluation and development standards, our sleds orders that we have been working on for some time. Um. Uh, Alaska, Mike Johnson, our, uh, Community and Economic Development Director to give us just a brief. Uh, overview on what this is. Um. I expect people that are here to comment probably know, but for someone else who may be listening, give us a quick.
Thank you. So this is a public comment on a, on a technical amendment to the city's. Sensitive lands evaluation and development standards ordinance, which is. Affectionately known as sleds, which is the acronym of all those letters. Just some background and timeline, I, I won't go into detail on the, the. Nature of each of these changes, but I want to provide context for where this is coming from and where it's been, uh, to date. This is a technical update to the existing sleds ordinance. We've had this ordinance in place, uh, in the city for, for numerous years at this point. Um, the ordinance regulates the following hazards, um, and, and no new hazards have been added. Although new, um, new regulations for those hazards and updated regulations have been drafted. So that the hazards are listed there as, as mentioned, um, in the current sleds ordinance and as, as referenced in the new update. Surface fault rupture, which is earthquake hazards, slope stability and landslide liquefaction. Debris flow, alluvial fan, rockfall, groundwater source protection. And then riparian corridor and watershed. Again, those are all listed in today's ordinance as hazards that should be regulated by, by the city. Um, particularly as it relates to new development activity in areas where these hazards exist. I do want to clarify, however. In today's ordinance, although riparian corridor and watershed is listed as a hazard. That should be studied and assessed, the, the actual standards are nowhere to be found. So, so the standards proposed for riparian corridor and watershed, uh, hazards have been drafted and proposed new by staff. A technical staff review and update of this began three years ago, uh, well, four now, back in twenty nineteen. The primary purpose was to update all the standards to the highest and best practice for identifying, studying. And mitigating hazards in the city. Again, this is a development, um. Oriented ordinance, so, uh, these standards primarily apply during new development or substantial redevelopment activity. Uh, they apply less for ongoing use of existing property in the city. Uh, the recommendations made in the ordinance, um, come from a wide range of, of technical and professional sources. Uh, GeoStrata is the city's contracted, uh, geology and geotechnical consultant. City staff did extensive research and, and put together the draft language, obviously. Uh, FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, the Forest Service, Utah Geological Survey, uh, fault experts, including those who, um, kind of write. The, the accepted best practices used by the, the Utah Geological Survey in the state. Um, Salt Lake County Flood Control and then Environmental Protection Experts at the University of Utah. So we cast a wide net to try to get input from as many, uh, qualified experts as possible. Formal discussion and public hearings, uh, were held by the Planning Commission beginning in January of twenty twenty-two, about a year ago. Uh, and numerous preliminary discussions had occurred before that kind of work session level, um, workshop discussions. In August twenty twenty-two, so, uh, you know, eight months or so later. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the draft ordinance to the city council, uh, by a, a count of four to three. And then subsequent updates were made to the draft ordinance. Based on planning commission feedback and recommendations and also based on, uh, follow-up meetings held with, uh, residents that, that had questions or concerns or, or suggestions. And then we, we took this to the council in work sessions beginning in, in October through the end of the year. Including at the last meeting where we talked about the riparian, um, protection standards that have been proposed. Uh, now it's brought to the pub, the, the business meeting for public comment. Uh, the, the various forms of noticing that have occurred throughout this process, we, we've done the formal noticing posted online. Uh, noticed through the, the city website's email notification system that, that, uh, residents could subscribe to. Uh, ordinance drafts, staff reports, minutes, et cetera, have always been available on the city website and we keep that very updated and current. Uh, and then multiple city newsletter articles have been written, um, trying to help educate residents on what this ordinance is and what it does. Uh, there was another one specific to what a riparian protection standard is. And then in addition to this, again, staff has, has met with resident groups on numerous occasions. So changes made since the planning commission voted on this, these have been mostly discussed at the council, uh, level at this point, but I do want to just get this on record. Um. We have clarified language regarding the sleds review procedure, and that's what I'll talk about on the next slide. That's the, the kind of. The internal staff procedure for reviewing, um, you know, uh. Study, study requirements and, and mitigation standards on lots before any developments approved. Uh, and then we've done quite a bit of work updating the proposed riparian protection standards. Uh, we've added clarifying language enabling regulatory agencies. Proper access to do maintenance and improvement work, so, so regulatory agencies would not be encumbered by any of the standards in the ordinance. And then we, the, the, the bigger part is we've added clarifying language to ensure and reiterate that existing properties, uh, in, in, in many, many cases are able to continue. Uh, you know, reasonable maintenance and use of land, um, and, and really making changes to, to focus. That chapter of the ordinance as all of the others on new development activity. Um, so that the strictest regulations or mitigation, um, or study requirements apply for brand new development. There was a, a new update posted on the city website just today. Uh, this is a fairly minor update, but again, based on some, some public comment and some, some resident meetings that had been held. Uh, we further clarified some of the provisions of the procedure section, which, which, um, oversees. Pre-scoping meetings for hazard studies and, and land disturbance permits and things like that. Um, we've, uh, proposed a requirement that the D R C establish a written policy. For this pre-scoping process, it's fairly technical, so having a written policy is good practice. Um, added a requirement for summary notes or minutes or recordings or some sort of, um, documentation to be kept of pre-scoping meetings as they are. Important to the full, uh, scoping process. And then again, further clarified and reiterated that the D R C is the, the approval authority. For pre-scoping studies and land disturbance permits, that's not any, any one staff member or one department that is the, the city's development review committee. So I'll leave it there. I'm happy to answer any questions the council has, otherwise I'll, I'll turn it back over to you. Are there any questions from the council?
I would just like to make the comment that really appreciate Mike Johnson's leadership and the, uh, excellent results that you have gotten to. Uh, not only with the, uh, uh, all the earthquake fault zone part, the seismic part, but the riparian protections and. So this has been a long arduous journey. Thank you for your continuing work on this. It's looking so good.
It really was a collaborative effort, so I, I want to acknowledge all the staff and, and outside consultants involved in this as well.
Mike, I want to thank you as well. I, I know that you've done a lot of work on it and, uh, we've had a lot of input. From people on the riparian part that would be. Was very concerning, especially with some of the misinformation, but I think you've taken care of. All those, I'd like all those people, all those that would be involved in the riparian. If they have any concerns, that we'll be able to get them educated and show them that, uh, it is a, quite a. A practical approach rather than extreme example of overstepping, so I'm, I'm grateful for what you've done on that. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, with that, um, I do have a card, um, Mr. Espin, if you would come forward, now would be the better time to do that. We'll have you in the proper place on the agenda.
Thank you, and, and let me also express my appreciation to Mike for his willingness to, to meet with me. As I, I tried to get educated on the riparian, uh, section of that ordinance. Um. Uh, mine is a very specific question and, and actually a request. Uh, we, we live on Little Cottonwood Creek. We've spent a substantial amount of money, uh, to, uh. Make sure we have proper bouldering and, and, uh, support for, uh, runoffs like we'll have probably this next spring. And, and in the past, we've had some, uh, erosion and concern for our own property. But, uh, uh, we are, uh, my, my family is very supportive of, of the riparian ordinance. And we're happy to take on any, uh, restrictions that are imposed, uh, by homeowners that live along the, the creek because we love it and it's beautiful. Uh, just, uh, I, I wanted to just note that I believe the, uh, ordinance has a two-tiered approach. To landowners relative to the four zones, uh, that it, uh, that, that are designated. Uh, in particular, Zone A is one where we need to, uh, come to the city for, for much lower thresholds. Of, uh, development or, or, uh, uh, change. And, uh, but i- as I understand it, and, and, and maybe Mike can, uh, help me remember this, but for larger land owners, that, that, that zone doubles. It's an additional twenty-five feet, which seems inconsistent. Uh, if it's sufficient for, uh, one, uh, landowner, why does it need to be double for another? My land is, is particularly unique is because it's long and it follows the creek. And so if you double it, if you go to fifty feet, it takes up darn near half of my property all the way along the creek. And so for simple things, a shed or a tree, or I don't know, what it, what it would be required to come to the city. It's substantial, and I just ask if I have an acre and a half versus my neighbor who has a half an acre. Why would it, uh, wh- why would I have to, uh? Be punitive? Why, why is it punitive to me? And I don't, I haven't heard any reason for that, and I'm not sure in other communities that that is imposed on them. That there is a two-tier standard. So anyway, I ask you to, to, to review that. To see if there is a reason why there needs to be a two-tiered standard relative to size of property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have, uh, we, we take notes on all of these and we can certainly, uh, work to, uh. Um, are there any other comments on the, uh, sleds ordinance from the public tonight? I can't see, is there some, anybody online that, that's got a hand raised? Oh, okay. Um, with that, I will close public comments on the, uh, sleds ordinance. And move on to item four point two, which is, uh, public comments on the amendment to the city's moderate income. And affordable housing plan. Well, again, we'll have, uh, Mr. Johnson come up and give us a brief overview of what this.
Thank you again. Uh, this is a, a very minor technical amendment to the two thousand nineteen Affordable Housing Master Plan. Um, this is being prompted, uh, in response to a non-compliance letter we received from the state of Utah. Um, every city is required to submit an update report. Each year on, uh, affordable housing measures being taken and, and progress and things like that. Um, and our understanding is about seventy-five percent of cities in Utah receive some sort of technical non-compliance letter this year. Um, based on, you know, the state's updated review procedures of these things. Um, the state identified two deficiencies in our two thousand nineteen master plan. I do want to clarify, the twenty twenty-two report was fine, that, that. Had no deficiencies in it. This was back a few years ago to the actual master plan. Uh, there's a discrepancy in exact language of implementation strategies between current state. Legislation and adopted plan. Each year, the state legislature kind of modifies. The, the, how, basically the language, um, of the various tools that cities can choose to adopt. To implement affordable housing, so the, the intent doesn't change, the way, the, the way they write the sentence, just they move words around and things like that, it's very minor. But they have said the, the language in the master plan needs to verbatim match what's in the, the current state code. And then more detail was needed in the plan to include actionable and specific benchmarks or measures and timelines for implementation. Of the city's identified affordable housing strategies. This was done in the twenty twenty-two report. Uh, there was a, a detailed update given there. They want that now retroactively added into the twenty nineteen master plan as well. Um. As I said, a, a majority of Utah cities received a similar notice. Um, updates are required by, uh, February sixteenth. Because this is a legislative item, it's an amendment of an adopted master plan. This has been through planning commission. There were no public comments and, uh, they recommended unanimous approval. This was talked about in the last council work session as well. Um, a copy of the plan is posted online and was distributed to the council members. We have also sent a copy of the proposed changes back to the state and, and gotten the, the thumbs up that. The changes we've made are acceptable, so this just needs to be adopted by the council and go through this legislative process, so we can send the, the compliant report back to them.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, if not, then I would, uh, open a public comment period for, uh, amendments to the city's moderate income and affordable housing plan. I do not have any. Um, notes filled out or anyone wanting to speak, is there? Anyone here that would like to or anyone online? All right, seeing none, then, uh, we will close that public comment. You will, uh. Give me a, a brief, we will go slightly back to welcome and note that, uh, Representative Gailan Canyon is here. Thank you for coming and. Nothing better to do on a Tuesday, Tuesday night than come to your city council meeting, but we. Uh, always working with us at the legislature. Um, next item we have are our quarterly reports. Um, first is a police report that will be given. To us tonight by Chief Robbie Russo.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here, um. I don't have my little stool to stand on, so I'll do the best that I. Like, yeah. Welcome to the quarterly report for the, uh, Cottonwood Heights Police. Um. Fourth quarter, and we'll go to the calls for service. And you'll see at the top there in October, we had fourteen hundred and twenty-four calls. In November, twelve hundred and seventy-five, and then in December. They spike again to fourteen hundred and sixty-six for perspective. Um. The officers handle about twenty thousand calls for service a year. In the city, that, that is a lot of calls. On the bottom, you'll see this, those are dispatch calls on the top. The bottom reflects the proactive self-initiated calls. So two hundred and fifty-two in October, November is a hundred and seventy-eight, and December is, uh, two hundred and seven. So what that means is they see an on view, uh, theft case or, um, something suspicious and they initiate. The contact where they're not dispatched. Um, on the radio. Breaking out the calls for service. Um, I know the standing joke about, uh, poor district one. Um. Having five hundred and two calls and seeming so much higher than the rest, but for the benefit of those. In the audience or online who may be listening to this, the reason that occurs is we have. All the big box stores in the center of commerce down in District One, so our calls for service in that district. Are overrepresented, but you know, by the numbers because we have all that business area. Uh, in District Two, we handle two hundred and fifty-seven and three, three hundred and thirty-three, and District Four is. Non-exempt at, uh, two hundred and seventy-one calls. And how do we get to those calls? Um, and, uh, Chief Pilgrim talked about this a little bit. Um, we have the chart in front of you, talks about priorities, one, two, and three. You know, priority ones are things that involve life or life or death, um, so they're, they're the most serious calls. And then twos would be a serious property crime or burglary in progress coming through. Item and, um. Uh, item three or priority three calls would be more of a, um, a verbal domestic kind of call or a theft call. What's disturbing, if you look at the numbers, our response, response time are great. We, we continue to lead, uh, the valley in response times. We get there faster than. Anybody else, um, priority one calls. The total response time is six minutes and fifty-eight seconds. That said, that's still higher than it should be. And if you'll look, uh, again, Chief Pilgrim touched on this because the fire department is experiencing the same thing. Look at the average dispatch time. So for priority, look at in priorities, one, two, and three. The, the time it takes for the, uh, call center to pick up the phone and interrogate the caller and, and put the data. Is as long as it takes or equal to the time it takes those officers to receive the call and respond to the scene. That, that hot not happen. That's something that's kind of new to us and has just kind of evolved over the last. Couple of years when we involved other agencies into that dispatch center. What's happening is it's overwhelming those call takers and they're taking calls, for instance. Uh, a lost dog or my, my son's in jail, how do I get him out or do you know a bondsman? And so the, the staff is occupied on a lot of those calls. And then these other priority calls come in and it takes longer for the person to answer the call. And to input the data into the system for us to respond. Um. Commander Tingey has, has, uh, brought in the, the vet director and tried to remedy this problem and we've come up. With a couple of solutions that we're still. with a couple of solutions that we're still trying to implement, but uh my pledge to you is to get those numbers down, and we need to work on that. Because to me, those numbers are not acceptable numbers.
Chief, I have a quick question, if I can. I know for three years, we've been trying to work with Beck on this, and uh I've called before and went through that frustration of ringing and ringing and before they even pick up the phone, I know they're inundated, and they've tried to get some of the animal control things uh switched over to try to make it a little bit more efficient, but is there any blue sky for us with Beck on this that we can slow, if if it takes them as long to take the call as you to arrive at a location, that seems to be uh a disconnect that we need to remedy, and I I haven't seen it in in my time, I don't think I've seen it improve.
I I concur, and you're right, and I think there is some blue sky. I mean, we have, uh, Mr. Tini has been really aggressive in helping me um address this issue, and now there's a there's a new chair of that committee for the police user side, and I think he'll uh make some progress, at least I hope I will, because it's me. So um, we start this month and we'll continue to uh work on that, but one of the remedies was this. Have Cottonwood Heights have their own phone number that we could uh advertise and and um and put out to the public. So if you're a Cottonwood Heights resident, you could call, you know, eight oh one, this number, call police. Um, and we have dedicated staff at VEC who answer our calls, because then they would be, you know, uh dedicated to, say, two cities, us and West Jordan, and see if that makes a difference. And I think it would, but so far, they've run into some issues uh with the with the phone system and the companies and in getting those uh vanity numbers, as we call them, something that people can remember. But uh, we are working on that because that is a problem, and I recognize it's a problem. That's why I'm bringing it to you today, so.
May I just say that we, I think we're getting very close on this issue. Um, and Chief Russo and I have been talking about it, but we've, we are right probably to the point of just getting the phone lines designated, and it has taken a little bit longer than we thought, but I think there is blue sky at the end of this, at this point.
That's good, I know we've had a few changeovers, and they keep thinking it'll get better. I just, I don't want it to reflect badly on on our force or either fire or police. But it's it's wonderful to see that that is improving because it uh I see what your times are, and then I see what Beck is, so that's that's a good thing, hopefully we can see that soon.
Well, it it's important because if you're the one calling the police and you're waiting for the that police car or that fire truck to arrive, it may see that one-minute difference or two-minute difference. I'm telling you, it seems like a half hour, an hour uh when you're the one waiting for us to arrive. So, thank you for that. The overall UCR crime report uh for, it compares December twenty-one to twenty-two. Um, pretty good numbers, the numbers went down. Um, assaults are down, burglaries down, uh thefts are about the same, stolen autos are down. Let me just tell you, on stolen autos, if you look back several years ago, that number was much higher in the winter, and the reason it was higher is because people would go out, start their car and warm it up, and then the bandits would go jump in your car and drive it away. Well, you can still warm up your car, only the technology as such, you can't, they they can't jump in your car and drive it away, because the fob is in your pocket. So people are still warming up their car, and um, the majority, ninety-something percent of all stolen vehicles are a result of people leaving that fob in the car. The days of hot wiring and stealing a car that way just don't happen anymore. Arrests. Um, October, all arrests are seventeen. They go to twenty in November, and then December, they bump up to twenty-seven because we're getting a lot more thefts, a lot more alcohol involved, so crimes associated with um um that type of behavior increase our arrests. Uh, the juvenile arrests are still low, five in October, two in November, and four in December.
I'd just like to think that that data on the juvenile arrest was added years ago. Um, when I was asked, uh, so youth council, some others, just to kind of were were we picking on the high school students and things like that, and it's good, it usually does stay low, that's good, that's good to know that it is, but they're they're not being targeted, but at the same time, that there there are some action that does happen. So I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for that, and I can, it's important for them to understand that. Um, we don't, we don't target them, we're there to help them. So, moving on to traffic citations. I will tell you, if you compared us with all the cities, I get this question all the time. How do we compare with other cities? We are not high on our citations, we're certainly not high on our, what's called a keeper citation, which makes sure, makes you go to court. Um, uh, so our numbers are this, in October, we issued a hundred and thirty-three. The number underneath that are warnings, so a hundred and five warnings, so almost a little more uh keeper citations to warnings, but the whole idea, the philosophy in Cottonwood Heights is and always has been is to change and modify the behavior. And if we can accomplish that by talking to the person, nourishing a warning or just a conversation, we do it. There are times that the behavior such or the violation is so egregious that we we do need to issue a a keeper citation. That number bounces up to two hundred and one in December, but keep in mind again, those are the holidays. Those are when the parties happen, that's when the drinking comes out, so we have extra staff on board. Um, that's funded through some state DUI monies, and so um the arrests and the DUI enforcement go up. All intended to reduce the injury accidents. Um, citations issued by district, uh, and we have those broken up. Uh, you'll see District One is ninety-two, District Two is thirty-five, Three is forty-seven, and Four is thirty-six. Again, District One is high because of that center of commerce and all that activity and the traffic down in that lower area. Um, and moving on to the accidents. In October, we had thirty-one, November forty-eight, and in December, and now it started to snow, so we got up to fifty-four. But interestingly enough, look at the injury accidents underneath. Although our accidents increased to fifty-four, the injury accidents decreased to twelve. So there's a decrease, so there is some cause and effect between being out there and and doing enforcement and getting the impaired and dangerous drivers off the road and preventing um injury accidents. You're not going to prevent all of them in this type of weather, because people, irrespective of the speed or whatever, are going to make mistakes. They're going to slide off, or they're just going to um uh get into accidents. And because I knew you'd ask, I had candy prepare a heat map of where those accidents were throughout the city, so you could see. Because some might feel like they're all in one area of the of the city, they are not. And that's what you, that's what you see up here, is they're pretty evenly dispersed throughout the city. Again, with the exception of that uh Park Center Drive, you're always going to have a lot more accidents there. But uh, you'll see that
There's a lot of traffic.
That's where a lot of traffic and
There's a couple of pretty big hills there.
Correct. But they're they're evenly distributed through the um, you know, main main arteries of of the city. Animal Control, we were down Animal Control officer for a couple of months, we finally hired Ms. Erica Wendell, and she's great, I'll bring her before you to introduce you, but those people are busy. Um, they handled seventy-six calls uh for service. Uh, a lot of them are animal calls. Uh, we don't have as many code calls as Tony, but we do get a lot more animal controls calls, and I wanted to mention something to you nationwide. We saw a lot of people who um adopted pets during the pandemic, and now for different reasons, they no longer are keeping the pets, so they are dropping them off at shelters. We use, we contract with Shels Sandy Shelter, but sometimes they drop them off on the side of the road, and we had that here as well, one of the well-publicized ones was a bulldog who became very sick and ill and blind, and we had to pick that dog up and and provide care and and medical treatment for it, but um, people can always drop the animal off in the proper care of a shelter, they don't have to leave it on the side of the road. We will take that, I don't want no questions asked. Um, and that's that's important for them to know, it's sad, really. Deaths, we've had no uh attended or unattended deaths uh this last month, which is, which is good. Um, property crimes reports, is that right? Yes, you can see I did a heat map of where all the property crimes were. I, one of you asked for that a couple of months ago, um, and so this is the heat map showing where they're at, and again, they're pretty evenly dispersed throughout uh the city. Again, we spend a lot of time down in the big box stores. Uh, we're there every single day handling calls, you don't even, not even just stealing from the box stores. Poor hard-working people are going there to buy supplies, and they go inside to buy their their tubing or uh whatever nails or whatever they need, and come back out and find someone stole their DeWalt te- set, and they're welded right out of the back of the truck while they're, while they're in the parking lot. Um, so a lot, lot, lot of thefts have been occurring um occurring in those areas, and um, we've been doing our best to be proactive and 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 watch those areas. Um, we did the same heat maps, I'll go through them real quickly. In District One, you can see where where the heat map is again, notice the Home Depot. Number one, they'll just fill up a cart and run out as fast as they can with power tools and see how far they can get um before they get caught, and we catch a lot of them. Uh, District Two, I'll, they're pretty self-explanatory, and I won't spend a lot of time on District Three or Four either. Um, except to tell you in District Four, we have something new occurring, and that is uh we're getting a lot of calls of uh people camping. What they're doing is they're trying to be the first one up the hill in the morning, and so uh they they've been camping, at least the calls are that they're camping. Most of them are people who have uh trucks with a shell on the back, and they've stored a lot of ski equipment and things like that in the back, but they've actually are staying at the hotel up there. So they're guests at the hotel, but their trucks are there, so it gives appearance of people coming by that, we have a lot of campers. That that's not factual, there have been a few, though.
May I ask just a point of clarification? Are you saying at the Canyon Center parking areas there by the Marriott Hotel is where there are trucks and people camping out in their trucks?
Well, we see trucks there, but they're not camping at the hotel, they're actually guests though, too. That said, we have had a couple, there's a property that extends, that's still owned by the developer um that extends past the parking lot, and they are parking in there and they are camping. Here's the dilemma, we do have a no camping ordinance that's enforceable on public lands. That property has not been turned over to the city, that is private property, so we have contact developer and ask them to post signs that say no trespassing, no camping, and I'm sure they'll help us with that. And once those are posted, then we can be a little more aggressive on enforcing that and moving people out.
So just so I understand, so it's the residents who live in and around the Canyon Center, the parking lot by the undeveloped building in the southeast edge of that uh Canyon Center. And they are complaining about this, or I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
Exactly right, that's that's who sees it. And and they sent us down there, and at first it was, they saw the campers in the hotel, but they weren't really, there was one that was camping in there, the rest were guests of the hotel, and they have their trucks stocked up with their stuff, their supplies and their skis, and then they go up the mountain, that's great. But the the others who are parking on the away from the hotel are actual um campers in the truck, and that's what we're trying to
Chief, I have a quick question.
Yes.
There's free parking underneath that hotel, right? I mean, there's free parking under that. Do they save time parking closer to the road? I'm not sure, you know, there's uh individuals can park free in that Canyon Center parking. Couldn't they just pull their truck in there and have it safe underneath in that parking and still not lose more than, what, a minute?
You 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 would think so, but we we would discourage any sort of camping.
You don't know what camping, I mean, just parking their vehicle.
Yeah, they could, but there's nothing
Some people are sleeping inside of their vehicles?
No, I mean, we have one do it, the ones sleeping in their vehicles are off into the um, is it further south, I guess it is, from the parking lot um in the uh developed, that had, the non-developed area. And the truth is, we can't enforce that because it's private property, and we don't have the jurisdiction to tell them they can't camp on private property until they post a sign, and then they're trespassing.
Is it a growing problem, or is it?
It just kind of emerged this year that we're seeing it, but you heard through other residents come and complain about Bywater Park and some of the other parks where they're doing the same thing, and we're vigilant about um um finding them and removing them from those areas, but this is pretty new up at the mouth.
Thank you.
Answering all your questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, I think we moved citations, this is all the citations during two thousand twenty-two, and you can probably overlap this with the other maps, because you'll see that the citations that we issue pretty much follow the major roadways um and see where they're at. Um, I know I do get a lot of questions about Wasatch Boulevard, they have their fair share, um, but I'll let you look through that and um, come to your own conclusions. And next is, I think we have a video, this great video, if you want to run it, this is um this is our officers, we don't get to be the heroes very often. Usually, it's the firefighters that get to be the heroes, but if you look at this video, um, you see, it looks like Santa's sleigh is being pulled by Donner and Blitzen. Yeah, we're being pulling them out. Now, I might not have shown that if that was a Unified Fire Authority vehicle, but I'm sure Unified Fire Authority would have had chains on that rig, and we wouldn't have been pulling it out of District Four, by the way.
Riley, note that that Sandy, Sandy Fire Department.
Oh, darn it.
Yeah.
I was going to tease and say, isn't that Riley Pilgrim running around behind there?
Well, those are heavy trucks.
Yeah, they're heavy trucks, and uh good thing we have the equipment to do it. You can't, we couldn't have done that in the Prius. So, so our safety message, um, it's a very lengthy message, but just be prepared for winter. Um, always try to carry some water and a blanket is a big deal in your car if you get stuck. Uh, you need to be able to keep yourself warm. Um, the blanket's a big thing, and it's an easy thing, fill your tank with gas, it helps the uh condensation in the tank, and it you never know when you'll need to be run that car and keep warm um in case you get stuck. Tires are a big thing, it's so funny to me, every year I stop at Hillside and Big O, and they've got a big long line up the street after the first or second snowstorms, that people who have decided that they need uh snow tires or all-weather tires to change them out, and don't understand why, they've got to wait, because there are fifty other people who had the same idea that same day. Um, so try to do that, clean your windows. I can't, that is my pet peeve, I don't ride a lot of tickets, the tickets I ride is when there's like a little hole in the front windshield, then someone's trying to peek around there as they're driving up the street, that guy gets pulled over, but it takes them three blocks, because he can't see me trying to pull him over, you know, but anyway.
All of the 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 ambience in his cars is changing from red to blue.
Yeah, it's, they can't see it through this much snow, but uh the big things are speed and distance, keep your speeds down. Give yourself room to stop, test your, test the tires and the braking, and make sure you see what how the roads are. You can get a feel for how long it's going to take you to stop uh before you really need to stop. So, that that is our safety message, I will tell you that Riley and I do get a lot of um calls this time of year. We talked about in the work session, um, uh, people working and shoveling snow and the heavy snow, and we get, you would be surprised at how often someone goes out, um, and they're not conditioned uh to to do that type of work, and they come in and and fire and police are called, and um, they they suffer a medical condition or heart attack and die, that's more frequent than you'd think, so. With that, are there any questions?
No, I uh, in in relation to your uh small hole uh in the in the windshield, um when discussing and look, doing various research on the roundabout and roundabouts near high schools, I contacted a principal in northern Utah who had a roundabout that was installed near their high school, and she related two incidents um that they had had um with it. Um, one was a parent that, due to video, they were able to educate on how the parent was not using the roundabout correctly. The other one was a a junior, I believe, that was driving to school one morning and had about that much of the windshield cleared, and she managed to clip the uh thing in the road, I think, so had an accident, so that's what that uh brought up, yes, definitely, you want to keep.
Yeah. Well, thank you all for your time.
All right, next we will have our public works report from our Director Matt Schiff. There are no
There are no videos of.
No videos.
Plows being pulled out or anything.
This is not my favorite time of year, to be honest with you, but glad to be here. Happy New Year to all of you. I will have to confess, it's been a little busy this past week and this weekend, so. I realized I had to give a report when you mentioned my name at the opening of the work session. So I tried. What I'm gonna do today is share with you briefly a little bit on the, uh. What's going on with the snow plowing and where we are. And typically I do like to give numbers this time of year so you can get an idea of where things are and what's happening. So with that. We'll just go ahead and go through this. The, I know it's hard to see these numbers. I'm not gonna stay on it too long. But I just want to give you a quick update. Uh, October, we didn't have any incidents, any what we call, uh. Incidents that occurred as far as weather. November, um, as you can see, we try to record all the data we can on what happens to us during. The five, six months out of the year. We had a, uh, we used about three hu- three hundred and eight tons of salt. And we, uh, put in about two thousand seven hundred ninety nine miles of travel on the roads. As far as, I got something blocking my screen here. Hang on a second. As far as the the snowfall is concerned, so November wasn't too bad of a year for a month for us. In, uh, December, as you can see, the things got a little bit, uh, more tricky. We had about forty three inches of total snowfall that we record. This isn't. The National Weather Service, we have little gauges up at the shop. We like to keep track of things and we've measured about forty three inches of snow. In the month of December, which was a very busy month for us. As you can see, we traveled a little over twelve thousand miles worth of traveling in the vehicles. So we aren't sitting in the yard. We were actually out moving around and doing things. And you can tell we had about eight incidents, one, two, three, four, about ten incidents that occurred in the month of December that we had to take care of. January, I will tell you right now, I don't have the numbers yet for January, but. Just based on the, uh, preliminary numbers that I've been, I was given this morning. So far in January, we've accumulated a little over twenty five inches of snow in the city. So it's been coming down quite a bit. We're on, we're the third right now. So it started a couple of days ago and we picked that up and we've used a little over eight hundred and twenty five tons of salt. Throughout the city. So January has been a little busy and it it, uh, appears it's going to continue to stay busy. Towards the end of this week, we have another one coming in. It's gonna supposed to last for a few days. This next one, just the way they're predicting, it's gonna be wet again. A lot of trees gonna come down. A lot of branches broken, um, but it's gonna be a wet one, but it's supposed to be somewhat heavy. Mostly up on the benches and up in the hills, up in the mountains. So we are preparing for that. To, uh, give you a quick, I guess I should ask, we do compare year after year. I I have, we go back to when we started in twenty sixteen. And track all of this, but this kind of gives you a few comparisons of what we run into and how we're doing along the way. You can see. That, uh. During the, uh. Uh, last fiscal year or snow seasons, if you will, we traveled, like I said, about nineteen thousand miles and to date, we're already up to about fifteen thousand. So in January, like I said, January, I haven't even received the numbers. I'm assuming we're up around six, seven thousand miles in these last few days traveled. So they are staying busy. Give you a quick update. Some, this is a lot for the public who is listening and those who are here in the room. Just to give you an update on where we, what's, what, what goes on with the snow plowing operations. This year, we've seen a not really a. Drop in service, but we've seen learning in service. We have five new employees on plows this year. And out of those five, five of them haven't had any snowplow experience until this year. So they've somewhat received a baptism by fire. Most of them started the first part of December, a couple in the earlier part of the year, two of them, but three of them have come on very recently. We were down, we're five trucks due to wear and tear, a lot of things going on. We are, we've, we've made it back down to just having two trucks down. So we're, we're working our way through and trying to get back to our vehicles. For the public and for the council, the city, we have the city divided into eight areas for snow plowing. They're kind of geographically located and each area is assigned a truck and a driver. And the reason we do that is the driver gets to know the area. So there are certain places where you can push snow, you can't push snow, and it helps us. To have someone who knows the area very well and they're able to work their way through. And I, as I mentioned before, we have new drivers. They're learning all over again, the best places to put things, the do's and the don'ts, and we're training continually. So that's happening. We also assign trucks based on the geographical area. For instance, up on the, uh, east bench and over in there, we have four by fours that run those areas. And getting down here lower on the flats, we have the bigger trucks and, uh, just the two wheel drives. Long lines, the city, we also have four trucks that run the long lines and you can see the roads that are listed, mainly these are main streets. That run through the city. The reason we assign the ten wheelers to those, we have plows and wings, if you will, on those trucks. So. They can plow up to three to four lanes at a time when they're going down Fort Union or they can plow quite a bit of, uh. Highland Drive, they will run tandem on many occasions to really pick up a lot of lanes. And the reason we do that, when we're getting heavy snow coming down. If we're getting up to an inch an hour of snow coming down, we can, by the time you get from one end to Fort Union to the other. You could have close to half an inch of snow on the areas you've just plowed. So if we sweep it all in one big sweep, we're able to get in, get out and move on to other roads and keep those open. When a storm does last over twenty four hours, we do go into shift work. Now, this, we have a staff of drivers of twelve drivers. But when we go into shift work, it drops down to six drivers. We have eight areas, so we have drivers covering two areas or there's a lot of overlap that goes on. It's laid out. So that, uh, it's the same every time as far as the areas and the driver is concerned and the shifts. But we still only have six drivers. The reason we have to do this is they will run tw- anywhere from twelve to sixteen hour shifts. And in that time, they have to cover their area plus another area. Plus I have to let them sleep. They're not machines. The staff has to go home and they have to rest. You can imagine yourself when you've taken a drive, just a short drive anywhere in the snow. And you've been staring at those snowflakes coming at you the whole drive. Your eyes, your body, you get weary, you get tired. From full concentrate and drop concentration on driving. Add sixteen hours to that behind the wheel of a truck in those conditions, trying to push snow out of the way. It really exacerbates the situation. So we do have to let our staff go home. We do have to let them rest. And they do, we try to run those shifts, like I said, anywhere from twelve to sixteen hours. When we do go into shifts, we have to move over to mains, hills and through streets. We have to keep those open. Those are the priorities on our list to keep those moving. If we don't, if we, if we drop into, say, a cul-de-sac along the way. It takes about fifteen minutes to get in and do a cul-de-sac with one of these trucks. So if you're dropping in and doing a cul-de-sac, once again, if you're getting an inch an hour and you pull in and do that cul-de-sac. Try to go down the road, go to another cul-de-sac. Everything behind you has now backfilled. And we aren't able to keep those main roads open and it's important for us to do that. If we have an emergency. If there is a nine one one call that does come in, they look, they notify us and we will dispatch a truck. Ahead of those vehicles to get them over there. We don't leave anyone without emergency access. So we are able to do that. Just FYI, um, it is also our policy to have every street opened within twenty four hours at the end of the storm. The storm yesterday ended at about noon. By today noon, every road in the city had been hit. It may not be perfect. It may not look pretty, but the road had been hit. There was a route in and a route out. What the staff is doing now tonight, they started this afternoon tonight and they'll carry on full staff tomorrow. Is what we call cleanup. They will continue to go out there and they will push the snow back further into the curb. When it's heavy snow, you can get one pass in usually in and out. That's about all you can get. If you take your time and try to do four passes. Generally what it takes to get it back to the curb. Once again, all the roads behind you are backfilling with snow. So we have to punch things open as we would call it and then come back and clean up. And then push everything back to the curb to get prepared for the rest of the, for another storm to follow. So that's generally our process. I wanted the public to know as well as the council what we do there and I, uh. Any questions? I guess I should say I want to publicly acknowledge my staff and the work they do. They, uh, have put in tremendous amount of time and effort. And what they do, they've given up holidays. Yes, we do work holidays. We are not home. They are out working. They are, like I said, they're out tonight working. They'll be out again tomorrow. The new, the the shift will come full tomorrow morning about five or six and they'll keep going. So I just want to publicly acknowledge them and the work they've done. Uh, they have done a very wonderful job and they continue to do so. And we do continue to improve. We're not perfect. We make mistakes. We probably hit four or five mailboxes on this last storm. We blocked in a couple of driveways inadvertently. We don't do it on purpose. But we go back when we've made a mistake, we try to fix that mistake when we're able to get back and take care of it. So that's my report for tonight. Any questions or comments?
I I have a comment. I want to thank you so much. It's it's a thankless job. I know that you get calls, uh, twenty four seven. And, uh, there's a lot of people that expect the impossible or a miracle and I know that we. I believe we had one of our drivers, did he break his foot or something? A plow came down on it?
A plow on top of his foot, broke his foot.
Broke his foot. Danny Martinez, I guess he was filling in, which he normally doesn't, so he chipped in.
Our Assistant Director of Public Works is out in one of the trucks.
And then.
I just talked to him this afternoon.
That's very commendable. And then I just, uh, got a text earlier this evening. I didn't realize we had a front loader moving some.
Yes.
I know you say we don't, we don't, uh, we don't remove it, we push it. And this is storm has been incredible as far as the the water content and the weight of it. I know we'll have some drifts now for maybe a month or two in some cases, but I really appreciate what you've done. I know you take a lot of. Negative comments about people saying you need to lift the plows at every driveway, which would be a. A nightmare because you'd have a roadblock every thirty, forty feet. As far as, it's hard not to push snow in front of a driveway and I've tried to explain that and it's. Believe me, I've chiseled out two or three little chocolate mountains of snow that's hard as a rock. But you you do a very commendable job and I want to thank you.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Thank you. I give all the credit to them. I I get to go home and go to bed at nights now because of them, so.
I I'd like to add also, um, but I want to commend you on your leadership. It's very important. Your crews reflect the leadership that they're following. And they they have done just a phenomenal job in our community. I have not received one comment. I'm I'm not answering any of them that they they do call. But I I'm not receiving one comment from any of our residents about issues with the snow, uh, removal this year. And, um, it's all because of you and your team.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I hope it'll bring a smile to your face. That, uh, when one of my constituents mentioned that her set of mailboxes had been knocked over by the snowplow, my husband immediately. In hearing the speaker phone report that said, well, that shows that the snowplow driver was trying to clear really close to the mailboxes. So that you could get through your mailbox. So please know that I do appreciate your crew and you, Matt Ship and. I try to be in communication with the staff. I I always go through, uh, our city manager, Tim Tingey. He's asked me to do that. So you and I don't have much one to one, uh, so I want to tell you now in front of the public that I do appreciate very much and. District four is very hilly, uh, very steep, uh, a lot of challenges. Uh, in fact, when the. Public comment was made about Corey Lane, uh, Blue Jade Lane, which is adjacent to my street. Suffers from some of the similar things. So, you know, we do have challenges and and roadways are so important. So. Thank you for all you do to keep us moving.
Appreciate it. And I would note the weather can be different in District four. Sometimes where it's nice, fine and rain down here, it will be, you you'll you'll hit that snow line up there and 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 that's a challenge.
Yes.
I will note, I was a little bit naughty over the, over the last couple of days and actually engaged in. Some social media, uh, replies that I don't normally do because usually they're not necessary, but there was, there was some things that were out there. I was just like. You know, they're working hard, um, and they're doing a good job, but it was also very gratifying, not only. There to see, uh, uh, probably about half of the comments this time were people saying, can't you just say thanks? Or these guys are doing a great job. They're out there working really, really hard. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then when I call and I talk to, uh, Terry at the front desk, now that is a tough job. During a snowstorm.
Should mention that. I would not be on the front lines on the.
I I know from way back in the day when, um, when Shelley was the front desk, that is that you get, you get a lot. Of stress and a lot of people really upset. That is a difficult job, but she had said that. This time around, she was getting some people who were calling in and saying, thank you. This is, and and getting compliments. That is a tribute to. The way that it's being handled and done.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Finally, uh, just, uh, just so I make sure that I understood, maybe this will help. If you're forecasting a storm to be longer than twenty four hours. I think everybody can understand, no one wants, no one can or should be driving twenty four hours. You get trucks that size. Who else, who else drives trucks like that through neighborhoods? Just the garbage. That's not an easy thing to do. It's very risky. You want people that are rested and can do it. So if you're getting, if if you do go to the split shifts. That's when you'll see the focus is on those mains and I saw our, 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 our list of main streets is actually fairly comprehensive. But those cases where you, if you're on a, on a circle or some of those other flatter areas, you may. You can pretty much expect that that's gonna take some time for you guys to get to because, um, when you have hills. Through streets, uh. I've got to ask the chief, I says, we didn't have any buses stuck on Highland Drive this year, right? And he's like, no. Um, that hasn't happened since. So, uh, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, uh. Yeah, well, thank you. I, like I said, I do, I should let Mike and his staff know the work they do for us. I I I don't want their job. I've I've done it a lot of years. I don't want their job and they've done, they do great. They do great. All those staff up front, um, Carmen Hope, Maverick and Terry, they, they do a great job. So we appreciate it.
I do want to note that we have plans. On building covered storage for our plows. For two reasons. Number one, what you'd mentioned with maintenance, our trucks are getting old. Knowing my, my, my work with, you know, Wasatch Front Waste, it's not, we ordered trucks fourteen, fifteen months ago and we still haven't received them. It's not like you can just go out and get them on a, on a dime. Uh, they go through a lot of use, a heavy, heavy use, especially with snow plows. But the idea to get them covered is so that A, we can help preserve that life, but also so that we can keep them loaded. And get, uh, get those trucks out into the storm faster rather than have them all wait to have to be salted up. So. Here's hoping that that construction and stuff happens. The summer as it should. It's been a long time coming. Well, thank you very much. Anything, I'm sorry, anything else? All right, um, our action items, uh, for tonight, uh, first item is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty three dash oh one. Tim, could you give us a brief overview of what, uh, this resolution?
Yes, this is an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County related to the UPDS media campaign. And it's associated with, um, the Utop Luton Discharge Elimination System. We go into five year interlocal agreements on, um, a media campaign and public awareness, which is a requirement that we have. The cost is a little over five thousand dollars, um, per year for this agreement. We've budgeted that for a number of years and we're recommending approval of this resolution.
Are there any questions?
I move that we approve. I'll second.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Peterson, a second by Councilmember Newell. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Yes.
I will vote. As noted earlier in the meeting, the mayor is out of town this week, so got to deal with me tonight. I'm not quite as adept at going through all the paperwork to make sure I get, hopefully I get it right. The next item is Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh two. This is approving the amendment to the Modern Income and Affordable Housing Plan, as we discussed earlier at a public comment period on, we not receiving any public comments. I don't, don't see any reason we shouldn't go ahead and approve this. I could have a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-two to approve the amendment to the city's Modern Income Affordable Housing Plan.
I'll second that.
Right, moved by Councilmember Newell and seconded by Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
Next on our item is item six point three, a Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh three. And this is consenting to appointments on the Arts Council for all of our various committees in the city. City manager interviews various people for these positions and make, makes recommendations to the council. This resolution, the appointment of Suzie Angling She and Christina, I am going to say it wrong. You said it.
Lamo.
Lamo to the Arts Council. Are there any questions or do you have a comment on them?
Yeah, I will just say that I did have the opportunity along with Paula Melgar and Ann Echel to interview these two individuals. I'm excited for their appointment. They, they have different interests. One is really into the painting type of art and has expertise and, and a lot of experience in that. And then the other has performing type components that will bring a lot of value to the organization and to the committee. And so I'm recommending approval of the appointment of these two individuals.
Are there any comments or a motion?
I would like to motion that we take to the vote Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh three consenting to appointments to the city's Arts Council.
And I'll second that.
Right, motion to approve by Councilmember Burrell and a second by Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
I will vote. I'm doing this too much in order and just going.
Takes a minute to get used to.
All right. Item six point four, similarly, this is an appointment to the city's Planning Commission. Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh four, and that is Mike Smith, who I believe is resident of District One down in the Lower Cottonwood Creek area. Any comments?
Yeah, first of all, Mr. Smith is here. He's sitting in the back here. So, so he is here as part of this process. I had the opportunity to, to sit down and visit along with Mike Johnson with Michael Smith. We talked about his interests. He has time to dedicate to this as he's moving towards retirement at this point. And based on what is required in the code as far as geographic neighborhood and community interest, I think that he will represent the area well. In addition to that, District One, we only have one individual that's serving in that area. And per our code, there are some restrictions on requirements related to districts. So this will fill District One, the additional person in that area. And I'm recommending approval of, of Michael Smith. And like I say, he's here as well. Appreciate him coming and, and being part of this.
I want to thank Mike Smith. When I called up Sue Reiser, which has been on the, the committee, Planning Commission, she mentioned Mike and Sue, I worked with Sue for eleven years on the Community Council and have a great relationship with her. And she mentioned your name, Mike, and I've known you and I appreciate the work you've done within our city, especially we've talked recently about the riparian and some of the things that affect you and some of the other things that you've been to up here at the city. I appreciate your involvement. And now that you're retired, you can spend many, many hours in this appointment. No, I'm just teasing you a little bit, but I appreciate you. Thank you.
Are there any comments or a motion?
I would have a comment. And I certainly want to be respectful to Dr. Smith and to our city manager and all those on the staff who are involved in the oversight of our commissions, committees. I respectfully again need to object to this particular appointment because I am very familiar with one of the applicants for this planning commission appointment. She is, has high level science degrees and has demonstrated over the course of many, many years, her commitment to the community, both in her employment with the Cottonwood Heights Rec Center, her volunteerism in PTA and more recently, her involvement as a residential realtor. So she comes very highly qualified. She also is a vocal advocate for walkability in our city, which is what came out in our twenty-two-two survey that our residents are very interested in the advancement of walkability in our cities. And our buildings are very much a big, it's a huge part of walkability. In recent years, we've seen projects such as Giverny, Canyon Center and other projects that were gave the promise of having walkability features and transit features only to have it dissipate, pretty much disappear in the actual end product. These kind of disappointments are only going to be fended off when we have better diversity on our most influential entities within our city. The city council, the city council requires diversity. The city staff and the planning commission, I consider in my humble opinion, needs to be the three most influential entities. And so for the sake of diversity, the fact that a woman was passed over, and this will be the third man appointed to the planning commission in this year that I have served, I cannot support this appointment. Thank you.
Other comments?
Um, uh, Mr. Dr. Smith, I applaud your willingness to do this. It, it, it sometimes can be a trying job. There are details that need to be worked out. There are legal issues that need to be conformed to. It's an administrative job. Sometimes thankless, but there is a chance to really being able to put your get your opinion out there. The biggest asset that I can see for anyone that serves on, especially the planning commission, but our other boards is the willingness to put in the time, study the issues, understand, in this case, some of the legal ins and outs and what can and cannot be done and then do their best to make good decisions. And I hope that that is the case with you. I've always felt that our planning commission has been very representative of the city. I, I know Sue, I think, has actually had two dots, two, 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 two sets of terms on the planning commission. There, 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 I know the current representative from District Two is, is, is also very well spoken. So with that, I would entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh four.
I move that we approve the resolution, Mike, Mike Smith, as the to be part of the planning commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson and a second by Councilmember Newell. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
No.
And I will vote. All right. With that being done, if I have not missed anything or brought something, the next item is our consent calendar, which is the approval of the meetings minutes from December sixth and thirteenth. Do I have a, any comments or a motion on that, that item?
I'll make the motion to approve our consent calendar.
Nice second, that motion.
A move by Councilmember Newell and seconded by Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, with that, it is time to adjourn. Make, take, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?